All right, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, August 25th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
................................................
Madam Clerk.
President Edwards.
President.
Vice President Paul.
President.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Camito.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
And Counselor Burke.
Present.
All present.
All right, thank you. So, first order of business, I have a couple of proclamations that I'd like to read. We in town were blessed to have two young men achieve the rank of Eagle Scout and the Boy Scouts, the highest rank that can be achieved. So Andrew Curtis and Donovan Thayer, if you wouldn't mind coming up. I want to... Oh, you guys can... I'm just going to read... If you want to, you can stand right over there, sit right there, that's fine, either one. Sorry. Yeah, chairs, yeah. As the Administrator says, paramilitary group, you've got to give them exact orders. So, since these are materially the same, I'm going to read one, but this applies to both Andrew Curtis and also Donovan Thayer. Whereas Andrew Curtis and Donovan Thayer of Tiverton, Rhode Island, has achieved the highest ranking award of the Boy Scouts of America and will be presented the Eagle Scout Award at his Court of Honor on Friday, August 22nd, 2025. Yes, this was that, this past Friday. Counsel, Vice President, myself were honored to attend. Whereas, the vision of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare every eligible youth in America to become responsible, participating citizens and leaders who are guided by the Scout oath and law, and whereas only a small percentage of Scouts have ever reached this lofty goal of Special Eagle Scout Court of Honor, and whereas Andrew is the son of Lisa and Chris Curtis, and Donovan is the son of Kenyon and Angel Thayer, and whereas Andrew is a recent graduate of Bishop Stang High School, class of 2025, and will attend the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth, majoring in Electrical Engineering this coming fall, and whereas Donovan is a recent graduate of Tiverton High School, class of 2025, and will attend the Springfield College, studying Physical Therapy this coming fall, and whereas Andrew joined the Boy Scouts of America on May 1st, 2018, is a member of Troop 29 Little Compton, Rhode Island, earning 39 merit badges and achieving the rank of Eagle Scout on April 27th, 2025, and whereas Donovan joined the Boy Scouts of America on May 1st, 2018, is a member of Troop 29 Little Compton, Rhode Island, earning 32 merit badges and achieving the rank of Eagle Scout on June 27th, 2025, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America encourage Eagle Scout candidates to complete worthy projects to improve their neighborhoods, their communities, and the region, and whereas for his Eagle Scout, Eagle Community Service Project, Andrew designed, built, and installed five wooden display racks for the Tiverton Senior Center quilting program, and whereas for his Eagle Community Service Project, Donovan removed and disposed all medical equipment from the basement of Stay-at-Home in Little Compton, and whereas achieving the rank of Eagle Scout is a very personal event in the life of Andrew and the lives of his family and friends, and is a tremendously important moment, and the same for Donovan. Be therefore proclaimed that every official and citizen of the town of Tiverton extends to Andrew Harrison Curtis and Donovan Thayer their most sincere congratulations and continued success in all future endeavors. You guys have the official copies, I hope still, right?
Yeah.
Congratulations. All right, as I mentioned, both the Counsel Vice Chair and myself were able to attend on Friday. It was a great, great ceremony, and we're all very proud of both Andrew and Donovan. All right, next item for the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Would any Counselors like to remove any items from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed. Do we have public comments?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay. All right, so first one is Mr. Nassif, liquor license item. Since that is a public hearing, is Mr. Nassif here? Oh, fair point. Okay. Is Mr... Oh.
That's me.
That's you, sorry. If you'd like to come up?
I'll do.
Oh, Nagif, I'm very sorry about that. She did speak. Our signee spoke. Yes, please.
So, the issue before the Council initially tonight will be a remand of the decision of the denial of the applicant who did not get put into the library... Excuse me, into the lottery, sorry, library, into the lottery. So that, the Council will have to discuss that. If the Council decides that they didn't have enough reasons to prohibit him from being into the lottery, then the public hearing will be open once the lottery is drawn. So it's a little bit of a confusing process, but where the first step is, according to the decision of the Department of Business Regulation, is to have a remand of that decision back to the Board for you to articulate reasons why the applicant was not allowed to go into the lottery, as well as give the applicant opportunity to explain or answer to any concerns you had about the record that you relied upon in making that decision.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Ms. Nagif.
I'm here.
If you just name an address for the record, please.
Oh, marijuana Nassif, 45 Stabard Drive, Tiverton, Rhode Island. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mohammed. I've lived in the Villages for 16 years, and since I came, he's been the nicest person to deal with. I've gotten my gas there from him. He runs out, he's very hospitable, anything I need, he do for me. I think he deserves to have this license, and he has the land adjacent to his gas station that he can put it on, which is right near the Villages. And I'm not a person that drinks. I might have a drink once in a while, but I have liquor at my house for guests. And I think Mohammed deserves the vote of this Board, or however it's chosen, and I'd like to speak for him and say he's a good addition to Tiverton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Ron Marsh. All right, and just to clarify, sir, because I know you had put in an agenda request on Friday, which obviously missed the cutoff for this meeting, so it would be on the next meeting, but...
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
So, since you put an agenda request in for Friday, is this the same topic you'd like to cover?
Yes.
Okay, just so we know, we'll reach out if you want to revisit. Name an address for the record.
Ron Marsh, 48 4 Rodway, Tiverton. And I'll show you in just a minute where 4 Rodway is. I'd like to... This is a concern that my neighbors and I share about suggestions we've recently heard that Tiverton may change from our current small bins for collecting trash and recyclables to large bins with wheels on them. I'm familiar with these 90-gallon carts because I have some disabled friends in Portsmouth, and sometimes I help them wheel the cart. They're about four feet high, they have five-inch plastic wheels. But in their case, it's an asphalt driveway about 50 feet. 4 Rodway is part of Bliss Homestead, and we are on the north side of East Road, we're about a mile east of Four Corners. We're a development of 10 homes, and all of our roads are unpaved, they're gravel roads. This branching off from East Road is Old Farm Lane, and then it began... Just the arrows indicate it's an upslope. So this is the highest point of the property. And there's also an upslope here, this is 4 Rodway. By the way, Google Maps after 15 years still doesn't have it right. They call this 4 Rodway and this 4 Rod... What? 4 Rodway, they don't understand Old Farm Lane exists. Anyway, so there are 10 homes, and we, of these 10 homes, seven of us are senior citizens. So I'm trying to help you to amet, and by the way, this that I drew, this blue dotted line indicates what would be a half-mile from where we leave... This is normally where we leave our trash, so the trucks can pick it up. So this would be a quarter of a mile. This would be a quarter of a mile. So several of our homes are more than a quarter of a mile from there, and it's hard to imagine needing to push these carts every week up gravel, up this gravel slope, and then down this one, and then bring them back. This is a different situation from everybody who lives in a suburban home where your driveway would go right, right down to the road. We fear the impossibility of being required to do this twice a week with these very large containers. So what we're asking to do is simply to be able to keep the small containers that we have now, which will fit comfortably in a car. And the only thing that I would like to add is that with a rural community such as ours, it's hard to imagine that we are the only development that would have this request, that would have this predicament. Any questions?
We have one question from Counsel DiMederos.
Is your road a town road? I don't think so, right?
I'm sorry?
Is 8 Rodway...
No, 4 Rodway.
4, right, I'm sorry, is it approved road?
4 Rodway is a town road.
So, but we don't pick up at your houses?
Old Farm Lane is a private road. Consequently, we don't get our roads plowed with snow in the winter.
You don't?
No, we don't.
That's my next question.
Simply because the issue is that this, in order to get to 4 Rodway, which is a paper road in the town, this has been, I understand originally...
I know what road that is, I've been there before. So in order to get there, you would have to go through a private road.
Yes, that's correct.
So, and so that's why you don't have pickup at your house, and you don't get plowed? Okay, that's...
Yes.
All right, that's my question.
Any further questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Camito.
Ron?
Yes.
So you stated, twice a week, you bring your stuff down?
No, 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 once a week.
Once a week.
But there, I understand there would be two containers, there would be one for trash and one for recyclables. Whereas now, of course, our trash is in the, pay as you throw bags.
And you're not alone in this situation, there are many other streets that have the same situation.
This is the...
Right.
Bliss Homestead, this is the extent of Bliss Homestead. We are 10 homes. So I can't speak for other developments.
What I'm saying is, you're not alone, there are other homes throughout the town who have the same situation, and we're going to try to figure out, or I'm going to try to figure out if there's another way or another plan or somehow to work something out, so...
Thank you.
We're looking into it.
Appreciate that.
Well, I will look into it.
All right.
I'm trying to come up with a different plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, next item on the agenda is Kate Noda/Mills Salvage LLC requesting approval of a sound variance for opening celebration at 2139 Main Road on August 30th, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. All right, come on up, guys. This is obviously not Kate.
No. Yes, most people know us as Baton Systems, and Mills Salvage is another company that we have that we put the name under by accident.
All good.
But, so, yeah, so we want to have like a kind of a welcoming party for ourselves into your town, and invite everybody who's been so supportive of us coming, and also for all of our employees that it weren't really hard to get us to this point. And, yeah, so we're just looking to make sure that it was okay with the town.
Perfect. So since this is a public hearing, would any members of the public like to speak on this application? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do we have any questions from the Council? Counsel DiMederos, then Counselor Camito, then...
This is the Manchester property?
Yes.
Okay, I just couldn't really figure it out in my mind. All right, thank you.
Counselor Camito.
So maybe just explain a little bit on what is it that you're doing or you're going to be doing?
Yeah, so we're going to have, you know, of course, everybody's invited, we'd love for you to stop by. It's from 2 to 10, I think was what we put down on there. But we're having all the employees and friends and family come down, we're going to be cooking.
Just, I mean, the business, like, what is the business?
Oh, what's the business?
Yes.
Oh, so the business, the business is an autonomous underwater vehicle company, and we use the Tiverton site as a test facility with its access to the water. It allows for us to be able to crane our larger units on and off, and also just gives us dockage. As you know, dockage in Rhode Island is getting tougher and tougher and more expensive, so this was a way to make it much easier for us to get all our team out in the water as much as possible.
It's a great...
And, yeah, and we're hoping to...
It's a great company, it's good.
Counsel Janik.
So we did get a letter from one of the abutters who couldn't make it tonight, and she pointed out that it's from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, it's not within the noise ordinance hours, which start... 12 noon to 10:00 PM, when does the...
10:00 PM is the cut.
Right, so they are going to stop by 10:00 PM.
Right?
Well, it's a decibel.
It's the...
Yes.
So that's what she...
So they have to watch for the decibel.
Or any outside, you can use amplification, sir, like a microphone, or you got to put music?
Yeah, there'll be music there.
Then we need it.
So it's the decibels versus the time. She did say that they were very, very happy that you are doing the work you're doing on the building, because the neighborhood really wasn't happy seeing it the way it was. And she's only asking if it not be very loud after 8:00 PM.
Okay.
Because she's got young children, she couldn't be here tonight and ask that we just enter this.
Yeah, we can do that, so...
If you had a decibel meter, we used to do it for singing out, we used to just watch the decibel.
I know someone that has one.
You can get it on your phone.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, it's an app, I have it.
The police department has one as well.
Yeah.
Hopefully they won't be there.
I would say invite the neighbor, so that'll...
Yeah, well, I've been slowly going around, it's been a lot, but, yeah, we would love everybody to pass through if they can, so, or stay and be a part of it. There's going to be amazing land, so...
I have a question, actually, I got a suggestion for you. I did receive some emails on this also, and it was about going until 10:00.
Yeah.
Maybe we could cut the DJ back to 9:00?
We can do that.
And stop the music at 9:00?
Yeah.
And I think that would suffice a lot of your neighbors.
Okay, we can do that.
Counselor Burke.
Just a comment, having had the opportunity to visit your site with you and your wife and your staff, it was, I'm excited about you coming in here and other possibilities as well, and I'm glad that you're doing this event to welcome the community as well. So thank you.
I think it's a great idea to do this, I own every business.
Well, we're very excited, and we owe it to all our employees, because they've done such an amazing job, so. Wouldn't be getting this property without them.
All right, Counsel Perry.
Guess I would have to make a motion to approve this until 9:00 o'clock and not 10:00 o'clock.
That's fine.
Hey, do I have a second?
For the disc jockey, yeah.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm not opposed to... The event, I think it's fine, I just think 9:00, 10:00, 9:00 is early.
I just think 9:00 is early.
If we pick up music, we'll start at 9:00. A sound variance goes to 9:00.
Just turn it down at 9:00. And everything's good.
Well, I know you're going to be there late, so...
All right, you guys are all set.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you, Counsel. Thank you.
One against.
One against. I was kind of against, but I took it.
Next item on the agenda is Tiverton Public Library, Library Foundation requesting approval of a sound variance for the library 10-year anniversary event at 304 Roosevelt Ave. on September 27th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, with a rain date of October 4th, 2025. Director.
Good evening. Thank you for putting this before the Council tonight. So on Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we are having a celebration event to celebrate the 10 years of this building being built, and you all are invited, as is everyone in the room. It is a community event for all ages. The majority of the event will be inside the library, but we do have two-time Grammy Award winner Bill Harley performing from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and we'd like to do that out on the east lawn. So I'm here tonight to request a sound variance for that.
All right, since this is a public hearing, would any members of the public like to speak on this application? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Questions from the Council? Counsel DiMederos, sounds like you have one? Counsel Burke.
I don't know, Bill Harley's really known for his rowdiness.
Storytelling gets crazy.
Counsel Perry, you good?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, motion been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed?
Thank you very much, we hope to see you there.
All right, thank you.
We'll be there.
Next item on the agenda is Joe Souza III Retro Expo requesting approval of a special event permit for Retro Expo event at 300 Industrial Way on September 6, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Hello, I'm actually Wendy McQuaid, I'm his partner.
All right, Wendy.
He's ill tonight, so you're stuck with me.
Wonderful. If you'd like to give us a brief overview, I think you've done this one before.
We've been here since, I believe, April of 2022. We've now up our shows to two a year, we do April and September.
Yep.
We were here in April, we're pretty much going to be doing the same exact thing as April, expecting the same attendance. I mean, literally, everything's going to be the same.
Perfect. All right, since this is a public hearing, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Any members of the public can speak on this application? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Questions to Counsel, Counsel Burke.
Clarification from the Solicitor. So, not that I agree with it, but my understanding of the court decision was this actually is what the court decided was an allowable use, is an allowable use.
Yes, they defined it as being entertainment, correct?
Right, so this application really does not need to come to us? Is that accurate?
Oh, I think it's because of the, was this because of the sound?
Was there a sound?
No, we require them to come, we couldn't stop it, but we require them to come to give us the information on the police details and those kind of things, if necessary.
Any other questions to the Council? Counsel DiMederos.
Yeah, I just, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I've already noticed signs for this, and it hasn't even been approved. So that kind of bothers me in a way. And the only way to avoid this is come to us mid-August for this.
I would actually love that, I didn't know that that was a possibility.
Yeah, I think that whenever you have an event like this, if you were to come to us August 6th, then you could have started advertising immediately then.
So in the future, for April, when should we come?
March.
March?
Beginning of March, yeah.
As soon as you know.
As soon as you...
I already know the dates.
Yeah, you can come as soon as, as soon as you know.
Okay, perfect.
Just to interject here, because I know that this has been a bone of contention with this particular property, and I think we've discussed it numerous times, but in my opinion, this is no different than starting advertising before they get the special event permit, is no different than the Courtney Roger Memorial Run saying the day afterwards, "Join us next year" for the same thing.
I totally agree. I think that it has nothing to do with Industrial Way, you are allowed to do it there. And I have told, as a matter of fact, I have told the police department once when they put it out without coming to us about their event. I just feel that we will more than likely approve it, so come to us early.
Absolutely.
And then you can advertise so much earlier and get more people there.
We would appreciate that, thank you.
Counsel Janik.
Can we, when they get their schedule, even at the beginning of the year, can they come to us with all the following dates, that we can approve it all at once, and they don't have to keep coming back?
Mr. Solicitor.
That would be fantastic.
They could, but the burden's on the applicant to come before us, we don't...
I know the burden's on the applicant.
No, so you can come if you already have a schedule.
Yeah, I absolutely do for next year already.
And we can approve their whole schedule?
We could.
All at once, that, right, that's within the law?
We do that with recreation, actually, if you think about it.
So that way you don't have to keep coming back and...
That would be fantastic, I appreciate that.
This is the only event you have?
No. Here in town, yes.
Yeah, so they wouldn't come to us.
Well, that's the only one you do?
We have two a year.
They do one in April and they do one in September.
He does one in April.
The first Saturday of both months.
But again, the library...
So while it's two of them, you can come at the beginning of the year for those two?
Sure.
And then it's one and done?
Again, as Counselor Paul just pointed out to me, the library's already been advertising this event that we just approved this evening. So my opinion, I see no difference between the applicant advertising and caveat emptor whether or not we approve.
Where has the library been advertising it? Do they have posters all over town? Because that's what I'm seeing for this event.
I do believe that.
And I agree, all town events should also come to us ahead of time. So it's not, John is trying to indicate that I'm against long plaques and what's going on here.
Incorrect.
It's absolutely not that at all.
I understand.
I think that every single event that goes out in town, you can come to us a year in advance, get our permission, and you can get more people there, and you'll have a bigger event. That's what I'm saying.
We're still kind of due with this and doing the rules and regulations here, so...
That would be the best way to do it, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Counsel Paul.
Mr. President, motion to approve the special use permit for Retro Expo event 300 Industrial Way, September 6, 2025, from 10 to 6:00.
Second.
Motion been made in second, any further discussion? Counsel Camito.
So, this always seems to come up, pre-advertising for everything. So maybe the Administrator can get something on our website to say, "Listen, just please come early and often." This really shouldn't be a project, if somebody wants to have an event, and they, there's different reasons for pre-advertising, right? Sometimes you pre-advertise to see if you have interest, and you couldn't have any interest, then you don't want to have your event. But there's different reasons for it. Maybe we could just get something on the website saying, "Any event held in town that requires a special use or us to vote on, just come as early as you can."
Yes, sir.
Just, we go through this thing and thing month after month, so, thank you.
All right, motion been made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? None opposed?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the somewhat backwards thing that we have to do, the approval to grant one Class A liquor license, package store by lottery, subject to meeting all legal requirements. The following applications have been received, LNT LLC, DBA Secundant Liquors, Patrick Burns, 651 Main Road, Tiverton, and East Horizon Incorporated, DBA Hot Shot Liquors, Mohammed Kara, 861 Main Road, Tiverton. Since we have two, yes, Counsel, Mr. Solicitor. I was going to say that since we have a remand from the Department of, or the DBR, we need to address that component first.
Correct.
And so it's my understanding, Mr. Solicitor, we have to give the applicant an opportunity to re-present?
Mr. Burns, yes. So let me give you a little bit of a background so we can do this properly, because if it gets appealed again, I don't want to have a procedural error. So the decision which you have from the DBR, Department of Business Regulation, was passed out to you as soon as I got it, and I think should have been in your packet this evening. Their concern was a couple, but let me just read from it. "In order to ensure that the owner is heard, it is appropriate for the Department to exercise its authority to remand this appeal to the Board, for the Board to hold another hearing on the applicant's fitness. At that time, the appellant will be aware of the issue of fitness and what factors the Board in reviewing and considering. If the appellant no longer wishes to pursue the application, it shall inform the Board and the Department." So the first thing that we have to determine, give the opportunity of the Mr. Burns or the applicant the ability to respond to some of the issues that were raised at their initial hearing about his fitness to have this license. We kind of start again, so it's kind of a, we should start again. In the decision of the DBR, they do cite a state statute, which I'm going to pass out to you, which is 28-5.1-14. I have a copy for everyone. And admittedly, this statute, even the hearing officer admits that this statute applies to state agencies, licensing authorities, but it seemed to color her decision as to what this Board could or could not consider when looking at the qualifications of the applicant. If you take a chance to look at that, does everyone have a copy?
They're going down, we're passing as fast as we can. We're passing as fast as we can.
I have extra. Does everyone have one?
All right. Let's send it back.
So if you look at subsection D on the first page, it says, no person shall be disqualified to practice, pursue, or engage in any occupation, trade, vocation, profession, or business for which an occupational license, permit, certificate, or registration is required to be issued by the state or any of its agencies or any state licensing board or commission. Again, where is local licensing board? But again, they indicated that this was coloring her decision solely in part because of a prior conviction of a crime or crimes unless the underlying crime or crimes substantially relates to the occupation to which the licensee applies. Any other state law to the contrary will be superseded by this provision. And if you look at what factors you need to consider in, look at F, in determining if a conviction substantially relates to the occupation for which the license is sought, the licensing authorities shall consider the state's legitimate interest in equal access to employment for individuals who have had past contact with the criminal justice system, the state's legitimate interest in protecting the property and safety and welfare of a specific individual or the general public, and then the relationship of the crime or crimes to the ability, capacity, and fitness required to perform the duties and discharge the responsibilities of the position of employment or occupation. And then if you look at G, a person who is convicted of a crime or crimes that substantially relate to the occupation for which a license is sought, shall not be disqualified from the occupation if the person can show competent evidence of a sufficient rehabilitation and present fitness to perform the duties of the occupation for which the license is sought, the licensing authority shall consider the time elapsed since the conviction when determining sufficient rehabilitation, as well as any evidence presented by the applicant regarding, and then they give you a series of factors there. And the following, then importantly for this, H, the following criminal records may not be used in connection with any application for a license, permit, certificate, or registration. One, juvenile adjudications, records of arrests not followed by a valid conviction, misdemeanor or convictions for which no jail sentence can be imposed, and again, it can be imposed, not imposed, but could be imposed, and a conviction that is not related to the occupation for which a license is being sought as determined by subsection F of this section. If the licensing authority intends to deny, suspend, or license, you've got to put specific stuff on the record. I'm reading from I, I one, two, three, and four. So that kind of gives you the general overview. Admittedly, this statute only applies to the state of Rhode Island and its boards and commissions, but the DBR and hearing officer colored her decision with, by this. So I think we should at least color your decision as to how we conduct this hearing and when you put facts on the record, either support of your decision or not support. If you decide that based upon the information that's presented tonight, that he's still, the applicant is still not qualified, you got to put your, your information on the record why you're voting that way. If you decide that because of the factors that I just laid out, that he would be qualified, then we'll go back to the lottery system, put the two applicants in, and then pick, pick from those two. That's the process I think we should be following. So I think it would be appropriate at this time for the Mr. Burns to approach the board, and you have the BCI record, you have some of the concerns that were raised before, feel free to let him explain why he thinks those issues are irrelevant or irrelevant, or you can ask any question you want at that point.
Perfect. Mr. Burns.
So, Mike, so we somewhat followed this procedure last time, didn't we? We followed this procedure last time, but we didn't give the applicant a chance to speak?
Well, the, the hearing officer indicated that he was unaware that his criminal, the criminal record, excuse me, the BCI check that was submitted was, that that could have been an issue. The BCI application is part of the application, so it was surprising to me that the Department of Business Regulation relied upon that factor, and it was a public hearing, and they seemed to take issue with the fact that we didn't give him an opportunity to come up and speak about the application, even though, excuse me, even though he was given that opportunity because it was a public hearing.
Right.
But now we're giving, now we're certainly giving him that opportunity, so.
So that, so that, I guess that's my point. So we gave him the opportunity, we asked, gave him the opportunity, but in somebody's eyes, we didn't do it properly, so we have to do it over again, when we gave the opportunity to do so.
In the, in the eyes of the Department of Business Regulation, they believe that we need to be very specific and invite him up to come and give testimony.
I thought we did, but okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Burns.
Thank you. And good evening, members of the town council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Patrick Burns, and I am a resident here in Tiverton. I previously applied to a Class A alcohol license, which was awarded through a lottery, which was to be awarded through a lottery between two applications, and unfortunately, my application was denied due to, and due to my background check, and the other person was awarded the license. Now, I appealed the denial, as you spoke of, under the Rhode Island Open Act and Rhode Island Fair Chance License Act, which the DBR had remanded it back to the town council to follow the correct course of action, as I waited also for the counsel of the ACLU. I understand these concerns, and I want to address them. My record includes misdemeanors only, and these charges are not, are part of my past, and these charges do not disqualify me from owning or operating a liquor store. Most of these charges occurred during my college years, and domestic-related issues were a result of a toxic relationship in which I was a victim of domestic violence. I am currently in the process of expunging those records in Rhode Island and New Hampshire. I specifically drove up to New Hampshire and went to those courts and submitted my expungements, which takes a couple months due to the criminal record being so long over twenty years ago, so they have to go into archives and approve this based on, you know, the time that it was. And one of those charges is now a civil charge, so it will be expunged as well. I'd like to share you, share why I believe my character today reflects someone who is more than qualified to operate a business in Tiverton. First, time of rehabilitation. These charges date back nearly twenty years. Since then, I have completed all court ordered programs, paid all fines, and my criminal record has been clear since two thousand thirteen. My professional career, for the, for nearly twenty years, I have built a successful career in banking. I started with Citizens Bank, where I worked for almost a decade as a branch manager. I then went to Santander Bank, where I was a branch manager for several years as well, and currently I am a vice president at Bank Newport, where I've been a vice president for eight years as well. Throughout my career, my performance evaluations have exceeded expectations, and I've mentored many employees to achieve their own success while providing exceptional customer service to businesses and customers as well. My community involvement, I am committed to the communities I serve. Every year, I contribute up to a hundred years of community service and volunteer hours. I am a member of the Newport Lions Club and regularly support local nonprofit organizations. If granted this license, my business will continue that commitment by supporting youth sports and local charitable initiatives here in Tiverton. My family instability, ten years ago, I met my wife, who was a dedicated teacher. When our first child was born, we chose Tiverton to, because we thought it was the best place to grow our family. Today, I have two children, an eight-year-old daughter and a two-year-old son. This business will not only support my family, but also allow me to deepen my investment in the community. I'm proud to share that I am entering this venture with my father, David Burns, who is also here tonight to support me in this business plan. Finally, I want to emphasize that past record does not define moral character. Under Rhode Island's Fair Chance Licensing Act, applicants should not be disqualified based solely on a criminal record. I stand before you here as a forty-four-year-old man with a family, strong career, and a proven record for community service. I respectfully ask the council to reconsider my application and allow it to proceed to the lottery process. Our proposed business, Secundit Liquors, will reflect the character and values of Tiverton. We aim to provide a curated selection of beer, fine wine, and spirits in which I have knowledge due to my experience as a bartender in Newport for fifteen years. We also will provide the same white glove service I have delivered throughout my bank career, and our mission includes actively supporting the local community through charitable giving and service. And finally, I'd like to thank you again, your consideration and opportunity to demonstrate who I am today.
Thank you. So we have questions from the council. I think Counselor Burke is ready.
Question for the solicitor. Can you help us walk through these BCI checks and summaries that we have before us?
Sure. I'm probably going to rely on the former chief of police to my, to my right as well, who probably has more expertise in reading these, but just give me a second.
So the, yes, Counselor, Counselor Minnow.
Good evening. So you, you did state that most of this stuff was twenty, over twenty years ago?
Yes.
College days?
Yep.
But we do have one, I believe, from twenty twenty-three.
People met each other.
So...
But I can explain that. Is that why you want him to...
Yeah. All right. So the, the city, the, excuse me, the town was provided a copy of a, of a district court sheet, a docket sheet for a, hold on a second.
Is that the case summary sheet?
Yeah. Case information with a, the initial charge was a, yeah, the initial, sorry, the initial charge was driving under the influence. That was as around, I believe, April of twenty twenty-three, which was a criminal offense. However, that case was disposed of, and the criminal charge was dismissed. There was a civil, he did plead to a civil charge of refusal to submit to a chemical test, which is handled by the traffic tribunal. That is a civil, that is a civil infraction. That is not a criminal conviction. The criminal conviction in that, there was no criminal conviction, the criminal disposition was, that case was thrown out.
But that was because of refusal of getting an alcohol level, in a way.
Basically, you have, back then, you had a choice of, you could either be charged with driving under the influence, which is a criminal charge, or you could, the refusal is a civil charge. The refusal to submit to a chemical test is a civil charge. The penalties are quite hefty, I believe, but it is a civil, so it would be improper for you to rely upon that information in making a decision tonight.
But why?
Because the criminal conviction was thrown out. It's not a criminal, but there is a civil. You could, you could certainly look at the, the refusal, that is a civil charge. As I indicated, the statute that the DBR relied upon seemed to suggest that you can't even rely on misdemeanors, but again, it's very clear that this statute doesn't apply to cities and towns. As long, my, my, my recommendation to you, if you are relying upon that, and it's going to be appealed again, but we need to articulate the reasons why you believe that's, that's important.
So mine was just a simple question on, I've just waited for an answer, like the legal jumbo, I understand all that. So it's just a simple question that you, you related back to saying twenty years ago, but in twenty twenty-three, you actually had another incident, and so why did you go back to say twenty years ago and leave this one out?
Because that, that was expunged.
It wasn't expunged, right? It's still a civil charge.
I don't believe it's expunged.
No.
The, the criminal.
The criminal.
The criminal was dismissed, but it's not expunged. There was, let me be clear, the criminal was not adjudicated.
Right.
So it was not adjudicated, it doesn't exist, the criminal charge was dismissed. There is a civil charge, refusal to submit to a drug, alcohol, chemical test.
Okay. So that, that's your answer, just because it was, in your opinion, because it was...
And, yeah, because it was dismissed and expunged. And I have gone through, and I stated in here that since then, I have paid all my fines, done all of the court ordered things that I needed, and since then, and if you, and Marcel was saying that based off of the Fair Licensing Act, yeah, and I understand that because this is a local, yes. So that is why I did not include that.
I'm just looking for a response on why, like, you mentioned everything from twenty years ago, like, I don't want to say deceiving us, but like twenty years ago, like this was my past, and recently, it was just a couple of years ago, we had an incident.
And that's why I said my criminal background. Okay.
Counselor DeMeaders.
So explain to me, Mike, you, this is a state statute, and you don't believe that this supersedes the town's? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So in your opinion...
The state statute clearly, even the DBR in the decision indicates that it doesn't apply to local licensing authorities, the statute, but it does provide guidance that the state may, that the DBR may look at, whether or not it would hold up in a court of law, but that's what the DBR relied upon. So yes, if you ask me, does this statute apply to this board? No.
No.
Does it color, could it color? Should you use it as a little bit of color in determining what you should do? My advice would be, yes, somewhat, but you still have broad discretion as to whether or not, and the decision is very clear, you still have broad administrative, this is not a court, this is administrative, ask for a license.
Well, that's what...
Right. As long as you articulate those reasons why you believe this applicant is entitled to or not entitled to be put, to go to the next step from a library, that's all the DBR is asking for at this point, and that's all I would ask for. It would be up to me to defend it, whether, whether, what other way, what, excuse me, whatever way this board decides.
Mr. Solicitor, just for clarification, in theory, because this state statute regulates state agencies and boards, but doesn't apply to us, I could, I'm not going to do this, but I could say, I don't like the color of his tie, therefore...
That would be arbitrary and capricious. So, all right, so you have to, you have to give good reasons, but you can't be arbitrary. You can't say, he wore a bad tie today, I don't like his tie. No, that would, that would be arbitrary. But if you can relate what's before you to your decision, to all the information, by the way, the decision has to do, can be, more than just the BCI check, could be other factors, could be the location, it could be other factors that you might want to look at, but, but he was remanded here basically because the DBR said we did not give him an opportunity to explain his past record, which we have now done.
Counselor Burke.
Mr. Burns, you had mentioned, if I want to get this right, that these passed before the twenty twenty-three event, all were when you were in college?
Most of them.
Most of them.
And just after.
Because they were two thousand six to about two thousand thirteen?
Yeah, that, unless, forgetting those two.
Okay. So it was, it was a series of events that occurred between two thousand six and two thousand thirteen?
Several. That's why I said most of them occurred while I was during my, my early twenties and college years.
Thank you. Counselor Perry.
Mr. Burns, I have a question on the location.
Yes.
I'm looking at the application, and it says, Paquin Realty LLC, six fifty one Main Road.
Mm-hmm.
Are you planning on leveling that building or using that building?
No, we can remove the offices, and it will be sufficient square footage to put a store in there.
Mr. President, question for the solicitor?
Yes.
The gentleman mentioned New Hampshire record. We don't have that.
I agree. I'm not aware of a New Hampshire record. You're certainly free to ask him about that.
It was a marijuana charge that you guys had brought up last time.
What was, what's the status of that? What was the status of that charge? Was it a misdemeanor or is it criminal?
Yes, it was a misdemeanor, and it will, it's a civil charge now, so it will be expunged.
What year was that?
Two, nineteen ninety-nine.
In nineteen ninety-nine, was that a criminal charge? It was a misdemeanor criminal charge?
Yes.
It was a conviction or is a...
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counselor Janik.
So for the solicitor, because none of us are attorneys, so there was a criminal arrest that because of whatever legal ramifications turned into noncriminal.
What are you referring to?
I'm talking about the 2023.
Yes.
So.
There was an arrest, you can't review an arrest. It was an arrest for DUI. However, he had a right to plead or come to a resolution, and the resolution was the criminal charge was dismissed, he was not convicted of that criminal charge, he did plead to a civil charge of refusing to submit to a chemical test, which is civil, it is not criminal. And as a result, there were certain impositions opposed. If this, if this was a state board, I would tell you that you should not even be considering that, we now have that information before, for you. You need to do, if that's, if you're relying upon that, then you just need to articulate that, and he has a right to appeal if he just thinks that was improper, but that's something you need to consider, but I just need you to articulate those facts. But I wanna be very clear, it was a, it's like getting a traffic ticket, a speeding ticket, it is a civil violation.
Councillor Perry.
Going back to, I'll get off of the criminal stuff, and that's gonna require a change of use, correct?
Yes, from business to mergantile.
Right, and we're not sure that's gonna happen.
I have to have a architect just look at the fire system.
Won't you have to go before the planning board?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't you have to go before the planning board to get the change of use?
No, I just have to go in front, I have to have the fire department come look at it.
What's the underlying zone? What's the underlying zone that that property is in right now?
I'm not 100% positive, but I know when I talk to the fire department.
I think it's neighborhood friendly.
I'm gonna pull it up.
We can look it up.
I think it's neighborhood friendly.
I'm going to the zoning, got the map. All right, hold on, what's this, Pleasant Street, Ross, right there. I love, I love the way the GIS operates. It's colored pink, pedestrian friendly district.
Pedestrian friendly?
Yeah, yeah.
What would be the square footage of the building?
I'll tell you right now.
Your proposed building, sir?
I'm sorry to say.
What would be the square footage of your proposed building?
The building exists.
Oh.
Yeah, it's already there.
Well, how big is it? What's the square foot?
I don't know the square footage of the whole building.
Three thousand, six hundred and forty-four.
Three thousand?
Six hundred and forty-four. Thirty-six, forty-four square feet on the first floor.
So retail business of less than 20,000 square feet, footprint is permitted in the pedestrian federal district.
So he would have to go.
No, it's permitted, it's a permitted use. I'm looking at this, if there's another liquor store, but I'm looking to see if there's a specific liquor store, but I don't think there is.
The only other one is up there.
There's one in the.
No, 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 I'm talking about in the use table, sorry.
But it would be a change of use.
It would be a change of use, but it doesn't have to go before zoning.
No, but it would have to go, I would assume, in front of planning.
Maybe a development.
There's multiple, there's other businesses in the building.
There may be, there may need to be a development plan review, but there's not a change of use review, there might be a development plan review, but not, not.
Mike, when you're having a change of use, you're gonna hear a whole nother slew of codes.
It's the same use as retail. It's, that's the issue, it's not a change.
They would have to meet all of the criteria of parking and all of that.
Correct.
There is.
And that's a development plan review, that's not. You can disagree with me, that's fine, but.
I don't think.
There's not a lot of parking there.
Do you have apartments above there too?
Not above where the store would be.
But there are apartments there, right?
There's one on, if you're looking at the building, on the right side.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. There's an apartment there.
And mixed-use resident, mixed-use residential is allowed in the pedestrian federal district as well, as a permitted use.
Other questions from the council? Councillor Cometto. Councillor Demidaris.
I've been getting some concerns about that being there. There's a bus stop, a lot of people have called me because they don't really think that that's the perfect place for a liquor store.
This would be right down the street from the other liquor store that you would be approving?
Well, yeah, but the other liquor store wouldn't be a bus stop, which that's what it is now. There's a neighborhood in back, which is not where that is now.
The villages would be right behind the other property.
Well, right, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing from the community. They just think that that's not the best place for a liquor store. And I don't know if it's gonna change my opinion, but I just wanna tell you that people do feel that that is not the place.
Okay, thank you for your concern.
Mr. Solicitor, given the fact that this building is directly across the street from a cemetery, and Rhode Island is very puritanical in our state laws, is there anything that you're aware of on state, like the state laws, that would prohibit this type of establishment across the street from a cemetery, similar to how the representative is shaking his head? So.
I know there's a 200-foot for restaurants, for liquor licenses, for churches, schools and whatnot, but I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit cemeteries.
I figured I'd ask, I don't know, the dead sometimes get upset.
And by the way, I'm just going back to councillor Cometto, so development plan review would be required if there's a change in the use of the property where no extensive, where no extensive construction or improvements is sought.
Councillor Janik.
I would be concerned too with the traffic. We used Paquin for many, many years for insurance, and it was a problem getting in and out, and there were like three parking spots in the front, maybe four. It's a narrow road to get out in the side, it's hard to get in and out of Main Road at that point, I just, I don't think, and with insurance, there's a lot, not a lot of people going in and out, with a liquor store, you've got people in and out, in and out. It's also close to the north, the one at the north end, so they're, they're close in proximity.
Yes, again, this, the other liquor store is only a couple of roads down from this establishment, and there is parking, there's a parking lot on the right side, and the left side, and also in the back.
Oh, it's shared? What's, what's, what's the other business? Because I know Paquin's is gone, so.
Yeah.
Massage.
Massage, the massage therapy.
Well, that would be all right for shared parking, because there's no shared parking allowed. So it'd be all right, but they would have to have enough parking spaces for both businesses.
Correct.
So we'd have to look what the massage needed.
Based on the square footage of the building, yes.
And then there's also an apartment, so there has to be.
There's all.
Yeah, that would all be in consideration.
Also another garage in the rear of the building, I believe is still being used privately in the same parking lot.
In the back?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I would just like to make a comment. That location is in a very residential area, like Denise said, and I've been getting emails also. A council years ago made a bad decision by putting a gun range in that area. I don't wanna make the same mistake in doing this. Thank you.
May I make a comment real quick?
Absolutely.
How would that differ from the other proposed store when it's only a couple of roads down?
Because it's, there's more land, there's, there's a road that goes in back.
I'll answer that.
Go ahead, Dave.
From what I've seen, where he wants to put his location, it's behind this building, I don't think there's many residents, the closest resident to him, I believe, would be the Villages of Mount Home. Hey, there are a couple of houses on that street, but where you wanna put your location, there are plenty of houses behind you. And I've been, like I said, I've been getting emails saying, no, please vote against this, so, thank you.
Councillor Cometto.
So I don't think the location is the best location, that's just my personal opinion, I had said at the last meeting, but I also feel as though, and I'll be honest, I think I've been in the same type of situation that you have been in, in the past, you know, some decisions that I've made weren't the best decisions. I've grown from them, I've changed from them, I've moved on from them, so my decision is only based on location, but I do believe in second chances and moving forward, so I'm not sure how the procedure works, but I'll take that up once we get to the vote, and I think I remain the same way I did last time.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion? Let's structure this the correct way so that.
So the motion would be to either allow this applicant to be put back into the lottery and to be chosen with the other applicant, you know, at random, or the decision would not to be allowed to go back into the lottery and we'll stick with the original decision by default. So if, obviously he's not in the lottery, can't be picked again, so the original, the original application would stand and the granting of that original license would stand. I just need to make stress to the board, you need to articulate on the record, whether it be the BCI issues or the location issues, why you are not believe that this application should not go forward into the lottery.
Mr. Solicitor, would it be appropriate then to do, once there's a motion on the floor, roll call?
Yes, I would, I would ask a roll call, yes.
All right.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Councillor Burke.
That the council uphold our previous decision to not allow Mr. Burns' application to move forward for the reasons of the history involved of about 10 years plus more recent history of incidents related both to domestic violence as well as to alcohol-related incidents, and while I believe that, and also the location of it. I'll stop there with the motion, because I think the motion's getting too long unless you.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, so now we'll go roll call.
Well, let's have more discussion on that. I think we need more discussion.
If I may, while I think owning a liquor establishment has a higher threshold than most other types of establishments, and because of the way this history is, all, pretty much all related to alcohol-related incidents and domestic violence, and I understand their misdemeanors, or less in the, in the civil charge, in terms of the civil charge, I still believe that, you know, one of the things that the solicitor mentioned is that, you know, we have to look at, we are permitted to look at moral character, and while Mr. Burns may have made improvements in his life, I just think that speaks volumes to who I'm not looking to see, the type of person I don't believe should operate a liquor store.
How would, how would we like to do this, further discussion, so?
I'd like, if, yes, before everyone votes, I'd like you to articulate those reasons why you're voting for or against the motion.
Okay, so can we go down the line? All right, councillor Cometto.
So, explain to me the yes or the no, the up or the down.
So if you approve the motion, you are affirming that we made the correct decision the last time, so if you're gonna vote no, that would be in favor of Mr. Burns' application.
Can I just clarify that? You're affirming that this application is not qualified to go forward to the next lottery, so, and if you agree with that, please tell me why, if you don't agree with that, please tell the.
So I'm gonna vote no, I'm gonna stick with my guns like I did last time. I do believe in second chances, although I am not a big fan of the location, which is the same way I stayed last time, so I'm a no.
A no not to bring it to the lottery?
No.
He's voting again.
I voted against his motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot the motion, okay.
So yes supports the motion not to move it to the lottery.
All right, do we need councillor Burks on the, again?
No.
Okay. Councillor Janik.
Plus he wants to.
I am going to vote yes. I think the location is not ideal, I think it will be a public safety issue, I think the traffic will be increased, and it's just a too small of an area, I don't think it's a great idea in that location, so I will vote yes with Mr. Burks.
Councillor Demidaris.
I'm gonna vote yes, one, because of the location, I don't feel that it is the ideal location for this establishment, but as, I'm also gonna vote yes because of what I said last time, I do think the moral character plays here, and I think, I do agree with Mike that this is an alcohol establishment, and because of your prior, and I do believe that people make mistakes, but I do have a concern that you didn't mention April 19th, 2023, that was only two years ago. So, yes, maybe when you were in college, I think we all made mistakes in college, but I really do have a concern about that. And I know it's not a misdemeanor, and I know that it's only a civil charge, but I think that reflects moral character also, and someone who's responsible for selling liquor and the strict rules about selling liquor, I just don't feel comfortable with you having this license.
Councillor Paul.
I also am going to vote yes on this. I'm struggling with the fact that we don't make the Rhode Island law, the law requires us to take a BCI into consideration, but then essentially handcuffs at least the state boards as to what they can consider and what they can't. The prior DUI, recent prior DUI, I do have a difficult time with. Location, not the greatest, but not as much of a concern for me. I don't know if this is gonna get me in trouble or not, Mr. Solicitor, but I'll take it. Essentially, refusing to submit, in my opinion, is pleading the fifth.
Councillor Perry.
I am also gonna vote yes, and again, on location, and I'm not gonna repeat what my colleagues have said, but I will vote yes.
All right. I'm gonna vote no, along with councillor Cometto. So I have known Mr. Burns for many years, going back to the days in Newport. The gentleman in front of you is markedly different from the gentleman 20 or 15 years ago. You know, as from a character standpoint, I don't think he'd be standing in front of us, you know, having worked at multiple banks, if character was an issue, so I'm gonna vote no. All right, now roll call? All right.
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? All right.
Mr. Burn, does Mr. Burns wanna say anything else?
Yes, Mr. Burns.
I'd like to, you know, thank you again for the opportunity, and I respect your decisions, however, I feel different on some of those decisions, but I respect you guys, and I'd like to see how you guys vote finally.
Councillor Cometto, how do you vote? Are we gonna actually officially, I'm calling the official role now?
No.
Councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Janik?
Yes.
Councillor Demidaris?
Yes.
I am a no. Councillor Paul?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Five to two.
Five to two.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So at this point, it reverts to the.
We're status quo.
We're status quo.
Yeah, because we already granted the license.
Correct.
So Mr. Humphrey does not need to stand up.
I should disagree, but I believe the status quo.
I did submit a petition today, trying to figure out what could happen, and essentially, I thought this might be a new hearing, but it's actually a continuation of the old, same result. And so, as I said to Madam Clerk, no one likes to hear lawyers talk, so if you go to the last page, we'd like the relief requested is that the council, again, approve of Mr. Kair's request for the liquor license.
I don't believe that's necessary because we've already put you in the lottery and awarded it, so. You may disagree with me, but I'm just trying to keep the record clean, so I don't want, and this was not on the agenda, it could have been potentially on the agenda if we, they had decided to put the name back in the lottery, we would have started all over again, but, given the fact that we've already made a decision, and the other decision to not allow him to, allow him to, excuse me, not allow him to go back to the lottery has been affirmed, I think, and the record is now believed clear, I think we are in the same position you were at the, after the last meeting.
Thank you, Solicitor.
Thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is approval of the proposed amendment to the Tiburon Code of Ordinance, it's chapter 26, cemeteries, this proposed new ordinance will add sections 26-3 and 26-4 for the purpose of establishing prohibitions, other restrictions, and penalties related to parking at Picassett Hill Cemetery. Since this, yep, so since this is a public hearing, would any member of the public like to speak on these proposed ordinance changes? Any member of the public? Any member of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any questions from the council, or do I have a motion? Councillor Cometto, looks like he raised his hand, put that one down.
I'll make a motion.
I mean, you got the microphone, the whole night.
Councillor Cometto.
All right, I'm gonna make the motion if you two can't get along.
I'm gonna make the motion, if you two can't get along.
I just have a, I'm not understanding the wording. To me.
Do you want me to explain why this came about?
I know exactly why it came about. I do know why it came about, but basically this wording is saying there's no parking in the cemetery. No person shall park any motor vehicle within the boundaries of Picasset Hill Cemetery. I think the wording might.
Certain areas designated as public parking spaces.
Okay, so we don't have any areas designated.
Well, there will be.
So, we're gonna strike the whole.
I, that's.
So, I think some simple language change would be.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
So, it's just very small, narrow roads, people, I understand.
I think it should say for cemetery business only.
Exactly. It would be a lot easier than.
To visit graves. Because there's no park, there can't be parking spaces. It's just not the area to do that. So, I think it should probably.
I think it should sum to the statement of business only for cemetery use.
This came from the Cemetery Commission, so I'm okay with whatever you guys want to do, but.
I am, yeah.
Bob's saying, yes.
Mr. Sedoma, if you would mind, pontificating on behalf of the Cemetery Commission.
Good evening, everyone. As you all know, my name is Bob Sedoma, and I am the Chairman of the Picasset Hill Cemetery Commission. We've had incidents on and off lately of people parking in the cemetery, leaving their vehicles undattended, and leaving the cemetery property. This could cause some problems with the operation, day-to-day operations of the cemetery. If someone parks a vehicle there and they leave, and we have to do some type of work, like right now, we are in the process with DPW and stuff, working on expanding roads in the back of the cemetery. It's happened from time to time, not often, but time to time, someone would come in, park their vehicle in the back in that area over there, get out of their vehicle, get into another vehicle, and leave the cemetery property, and it come back a few hours later. If we were gonna do work there, there was no way that we would be able to get a hold of the owner of that vehicle and have that vehicle move so we can do our work. We are not trying to prevent anyone from visiting the cemetery. We encourage it. This actually, what we're trying to do is make it more accessible for people to go and visit the cemetery. You know, we encourage people to go, if you want to have a picnic by a grave, that's fine, that's great. This is what we want. We want to make the cemetery a welcoming place for grieving families. We want to make the cemetery someplace that people are proud of and enjoy going, going to. So, this parking restrictions that we want to put forward is, does not have to do with anything pertaining to cemetery business. If you're there visiting a grave, that's cemetery business. If you're there for funeral procession, that's cemetery business, okay? If you're there to water plants on a cemetery, that's cemetery business. You are not leaving your vehicle there and leaving the cemetery. We also had a problem every now and then with someone parking in a veteran's circle and then walking down Main Road. Again, they're leaving their vehicle undattended on cemetery property, and if something happens where we need to get access to that area, we cannot do it. What this helps us do is if something like that happens, it will give us the authority to contact the police department, have the police department come up, call a tow company, have the vehicle towed off the property. It's the last thing that we want to do, but it's something that we feel necessary before it gets way out of control.
Yeah, does that resonate?
So, I agree with everything that Mr. Sedoma had just said. The problem is enforcing it with this language. If the officer goes up there and see, I mean, people argue for all sorts of things, right? So, if somebody comes back from Humphreys or the bank and runs to their car and sees somebody else parking there, they're gonna say, why are you towing my vehicle? It can't park here, says you can't park here. And they're gonna say, well, they parked there, they're visiting the stone. It's just, the enforcement has to be clear so they can enforce it and be able to tow somebody's vehicle. So, I think the words, somehow, some way in here, need to say cemetery business allows you to park. I don't know how to word it, but we needed to say cemetery business, parking only for cemetery business. So, if somebody shows up, like Mr. Sedoma just said, parks the car in the back and leaves, that's not cemetery business.
Correct.
So, can we put unless they are there for cemetery?
It should say cemetery business only.
For the following reasons, mourners, processions, you know, for the following reasons. So, kind of take what you already have there, and turn it, except for the following reasons, and put in A, can't park overnight, B, funeral processions, visitors, mourners, or conducting official cemetery businesses would be allowed, maintenance vehicles, service vehicles, and break it down that.
I, I, I mean, I think at one point, didn't, like, somebody on the, was, is that Picasset? Didn't like, they like opened the stone wall at one point? Somebody opened the stone wall so they could use this cemetery for park? Didn't that happen in the past, at one point? Right, they took the stone wall apart?
Yeah, they took the stone wall apart, to bring a piece of equipment in.
Oh, okay.
To do something, but they ended up putting the wall back together, but that's, that's a totally different story.
Mr. Solicitor, given the proposed rewrite, I think that we are all in agreement with that the administrator just said. Would it be preferable for us to continue the public hearing and then have the language redraft as formatted as the administrator has suggested?
So moved.
So, we can't.
Discussion?
We can't simply say after 683 Main Road, strike or accept in designated areas and put unless visiting for official cemetery business?
My suggest, I think that the administrator's suggestion of part, essentially parking is prohibited in Picasset Cemetery, except for the following reasons, and then boom, 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 you're done. Counselor Perry.
Well, I think we could eliminate no person shall park and go with the rest of it. Any motor vehicle within the boundaries of Picasset Hill Cemetery, loading 683 Main Road, except in the designated areas as public, and then add all that other stuff to it.
But there are no designated areas.
Correct.
So, that's gotta be removed.
So, take designated areas out also. Well, how you, you can't.
If I'm up in the back visiting a grave. Hello, that's not designated.
Essentially, the designated areas are the public roadway. And by having this ordinance, people can't leave their vehicle unattended, essentially in the middle of a road. That's, that seems to me what the point is that they're trying to get here. So, if I can go visit a grave, I have access to my vehicle to move it, if a funeral pulls in, otherwise.
So, I, I think, I think we stick with the original motion, which is to continue the public hearing to the next meeting. The Solicitor can revise, and then we'll take a look at the revised language, so we all know what we're talking about.
It's better, I, I understand, it's difficult for me to draft the ordinance on the, on the fly like this.
I would rather, I would rather you put some time and thought into it, rather than knee-jerk. So, with that, we have a motion, motion on the floor to continue the public hearing to the following, to the next meeting. Any further discussion, hearing none?
Can I just put the, we need to put the date of the next, next.
Yes, September, September.
Eight?
I'll say, yeah. Yep, September 8th. All right. Motion's been made and seconded, to continue the public hearing till September 8th. All those in favor? Unopposed? We'll see in two weeks. Next item on the. Six oh, yep, six oh one. All right, next item on the, on the, on the agenda is Dog Park Committee Discussion and Possible Vote Regarding the Raymond F. Jones Memorial Dog Park Event Pawapalooza on October 4th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Counselor Paul, you seem to be the dog park guy.
Mel is here, if you want to touch on it real quick. Mel's the Chair of the Dog Park Committee.
Same as last year?
Same as last year. Hopefully a little better. About 10 to 15 vendors.
Still looking for vendors?
I am still looking for vendors.
So, if anybody happens to watch and they wanna.
Anyone does a face painting, we would love to have.
Email the dog park.
Yes, always, email the dog park.
Okay, any questions from the counsel? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Pawapalooza on October 4th, 2025, from 10 to 2. Counselor Perry?
So moved.
So, I can.
All right. Motioned, motioned by multiple counselors and seconded by Counselor Paul. Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All right, congratulations, go get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, two motions and a second. Okay, next item on the, on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to accept a gratis land transfer of approximately 80,000, 87,075 square feet of Rhode Island, Rhode Island DOT-owned land, currently known as Service Road T-3. This is a notice that was sent to the administrator, to myself, and to the clerk. This is the land behind the veterinary clinic, effectively known as Blueberry Hill by most residents in town, including our administrator. And I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the land transfer from Rhode Island DOT. Have a second.
I will second for discussion, because I believe the gentleman down there have discussion.
Okay. Counselor Burke.
Can I go first this time? I don't understand what's in it for us. It's, you know, a piece of property that is in disuse, disrepair. What I told Counselor Cometto is, the only thing I remember is my daughter blew out my clutch because I taught her how to drive clutch up that hill. Other than that, I don't understand why we would entertain this.
I am happy to answer that question for you. So, we do have residents that live on that property, and it has been a gigantic pain for those residents to have electricity brought in, because it's not an accepted road. It's kind of a chicken or the egg issue, you know, this, well, it's, it's a state service road that was.
Sorry, but that's not true.
Under, under our previous administrator, this went back and forth between the state and the power company and the town, ad nauseum. It's been a three-year adventure for Mr. Hartnett, who does own property up there. I know that there is a couple other lots as well, and why would we not want to accept the road? Yes, I know, it's probably gonna need some work. Counselor Cometto.
So, I can assure you that the electric is in for every lot that is up there, because I put it in. The second thing is, I would like to have our Public Works Director at least look at this road to say, yes, it's a feasible road, it needs repair, I think there's drainage issues on that road. I do understand the concern with the residents that live up there, but it's like any other state road that we have in town. I don't understand why they can't get services or get an address or anything. It's Highland Road is a state road. They all pick, their trash gets picked up, they have services, so I don't see why this would be any different. I think it's something that we need to look into and make sure they get the services that they deserve, but just to accept this road, I think, is without any correspondence from our new director, because I can tell you there's definitely drainage issues, there's, there's drains that come down with big rocks called, just not. I think it's more of a headache than anything, but we need to make sure our residents have the services they need. It's like any other state road, they should be plowing it, the mail should be going up there, our services, and, and if anything, give it a new name or give it an official sign.
The Director has indicated.
I just want to make, we're not accepting a road, we're accepting the parcel that the road is on. So, we're accepting the whole parcel, not just the road. We're accepting the parcel of which there is a road on, apparently, but they're asking us to accept this piece of property.
Mr. Director.
Just in my past experience as a DOT worker in New Hampshire, I know I'm in a different state, but the term service road has a definition typically. So, it's not a class road that would get a definition that would get maintained. Typically, a service road is around some other highway that they built in the past or currently, and they use that road to build the highway or to get to other people's property in the back, but it's not something they would maintain. Just past experience, I'm not sure if that'd be the same in Rhode Island, but just as a.
That means it could have been a service road when you put 24. So, I mean, it makes sense.
Our state rep would like to address this as well.
Can I ask what?
Representative.
Do they get services, do they get trash pickup and plowing?
They don't get anything.
They get nothing.
They don't have anything, they don't have street address, they don't get mail, they don't have any services from the town. It is a state-owned property. It is a service road meant to service the state's access to Route 24 and the cut that they put through there. That's the only reason the state owns it. So, they had to go back and do work on the cut, they had a point to put their crane in. There's another point just before the end of the Skidmore River Bridge, same way. It's a state access point.
So, there are houses on there?
There are two houses now, I believe there's a third house coming.
And there's a foundation all the way at the top.
Yeah.
I haven't did that.
You should go up there, it's actually pretty nice. But I have been working on this with the constituents for three and a half years now to get DOT to get up there so that they could turn the property over to the town. DOT will not do anything with this road. The state doesn't recognize it as a road. It is a point for them to put their trucks or cranes or other machinery up on the hill if they so need it.
They wouldn't be doing that if.
No, they won't. Once you accept, if you, if the town accepts it, it is no longer a service point.
And they're not maintaining it now?
They're not doing anything to it. It's almost as bad as a couple of small-town roads that I run. It's pretty bad.
So, if we accept it, then there is, there would be.
No, we're accepting the parcel.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then we'd have to go further.
You'd have to decide whether you're gonna maintain a road, we own the parcel. So, we would own the parcel, we decide what you want to do with it, put a road.
You would decide whether you would make it a Class 5 road, which would be a town-maintained road, or a Class 6 road, which would be an unmaintained town rightway. And then it's up to the landowners that live on the road to keep, to maintain as a driveway.
But currently, these people up there aren't getting any services, and you have more houses going up there, more of your constituents will be affected. Thank you.
Counselor Burke.
Answer my question.
Okay.
That's why I asked it, so I make a motion that we.
Motion's already on.
Oh, is it?
Yep, motion's already been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? None, okay. Congratulations, Mr. Hartnett. Come up with a good name. All right, next item on the agenda is Tiverton Planning Board slash William Gerlach Discussion and Possible Vote to Schedule and Advertise Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Zoning, Article 2, Definitions 7, Article 4, Section 4, District Use Regulations, Public and Semi-Public Uses, and Article 6, Section, 8, Section 10, Other District Regulations, Performance Criteria, as it relates to cat rescue and cat shelter. Mr. Gerlach is not present, but he did send us a letter.
This is just advertised.
This is just a motion, yep. So, I'd be looking to entertain a motion to advertise the proposed amendments as listed by the planning board.
As, as.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
I just want to say.
Counselor Janik.
These are the changes that we made in the Subcommittee of the Planning, the rezoning. So, these are part of what we've been working on in the last six months or so.
Counselor Burke.
I request, and this is what I had mentioned at one of the other meetings, when this does come back to us, can we put these types of things on as discussion and possible vote on these proposed amendments as opposed to approval of? Because I think when we put approval in there, and I know it's common that we've done that, some residents think, oh, you're just gonna go ahead and pass it the way it is, and it doesn't matter what we're gonna say.
It says discussion and vote.
No, 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 up top, so I'm looking at, so up top, we have approval of the proposed amendment to the cemetery, okay? That's how we post it when it comes to our agenda for discussion and possible vote. So, I'm just saying when we bring it back to the agenda, that we have.
So noted. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, Counselor, Counselor Cometto, my apologies.
Let me explain that, Mr. President.
I got accused of that.
So, so I'm just curious on, on the change, so if she becomes the, the rescue center, this isn't going to put any burden on the police department having to, you know, all of a sudden accept stray cats and bring them delivered there and-
So we're just advertising this right now?
Okay, just for advertisement.
Those, those issues will, will be come back before you can ask those questions. I will tell you that this was a particular use that we had a person came to us, we, the zoning board, excuse me, the zoning officer indicated that they weren't allowed to have a cat rescue in that location.
It's, it's also something that is very, it's very, it's very finely regulated by the state, so we really didn't have to write a lot because everything really pertains to the state regulations and the state inspections and state mandates.
All right.
But we'll, we'll discuss then.
All in favor? None opposed? Okay. Next item on the, on the agenda is, under myself, discussion and possible vote to allocate up to $5,000 from Council Contingency Account 1020-6890 for Tiverton Staff slash Employee Appreciation Day on August 29th.
Move approval.
Motion been made, do I have a second?
Second, and discussion?
All right. Discussion.
What time are you having, Russ?
New time.
Okay. Thank you.
One more, one, one more point of discussion?
We'll help you.
The council is all invited, correct?
Yes.
The council is invited, correct?
Yes.
And the solicitor.
Solicitor will be away.
And we did invite, we did invite the school department as well.
Okay.
Okay.
That might be.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Counselor Perry, in favor or opposed? Okay.
I just want to know what he's doing. Can, can we reason not to?
No, no, this, this is, this is not to exceed, it's not to exceed.
That's a lot of him, isn't it, Dave?
I expect he will not use all of it. All right. Next item on the agenda is authorization for the town administrator to teach a class at CCRI for FY 2026, not to interfere with his duties as town administrator. The administrator had reached out to me. His contract is very specific that he would need our approval in order to do so.
As is the charter.
As is the charter. So, that being said, do I have a motion to allow the administrator?
Move approval.
Motion's been made by several councilors and seconded by Counselor Perry. Any discussion?
Discussion, yeah.
Counselor DeMire.
I'm not against it, I just want to know when you'll be teaching-
It's virtual.
Oh.
So it's Intro to Criminal Justice, virtual.
But it'll be during the day? Well, no, it's virtual, so.
No, no, it's virtual.
It's virtual, so.
It'll be during the day, because I'm wanting to do during the day.
Perfect, all right. No, not that I, I knew you were going to do it.
No, no, of course, thank you for asking, clarifying.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cometto, all set? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Town Administrator, discussion and update on town-wide trash survey. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know as part of your backup, you have the results of the Tiverton Trash Survey. I plan on releasing them. I wanted to have, give you the opportunity to kind of digest what the responses were. You have that pie graph, I plan on releasing it to social media and the town's website probably tonight or in the next 24 hours. I don't know if you have any specific questions, I think the, the results kind of speak for themselves, or the, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I will say, just for the record, for the community, the company that we utilized, obviously they put this together very professional, we had 1,407 responses, which I think was a fantastic response to the survey, and I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
I have.
Counselor Perry.
Did we ever receive the containers, the 35 gallon and the-
So we did receive the initial, the 95 and the 65.
I'm sorry, 95s?
Yes, sir. But they actually sent two 95s. So I know that they did correct that, we did have a conversation with the gentleman from Mega to correct that. So they were put at Town Hall and they were also put at the senior center, I believe.
Unfortunately, nobody's seen them in the Town Hall.
Correct. Well, that's on the agenda next. But we did take pictures of those two containers, and they were incorporated into the survey. So you could see a picture where you could not physically, you know, touch it, but it was, there was pictures in the survey.
Counselor, oh, sorry.
Most of the comments that are coming in are, they want to know what the small container's going to look like. I think most people want to go for the small one and not the large one.
Correct. The 65.
Right.
And just, just so everyone at home is aware, that what we would do is decide on a specific size, and then for those who wanted either a bigger or a smaller, depending on which way we went, we would have some of those available as well, so that residents would have the opportunity to swi, swap them out if they wanted something bigger or smaller, depending on the direction we go.
I think this was great data for the council to deliberate and make decisions moving forward.
Counselor Burke.
I'll make an assumption, but I could be wrong. I assume that the survey company could not control for duplicated responses.
I'll double-check on that because I know that we spoke about that, and they were pretty clear on how they, I, I'm-
It's tied to the address.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that they had a system that you couldn't try and game the survey by putting multiple responses in. So we did have a fairly large, I want to say about 20 to 25% of actual physical written surveys, but I know the online surveys went over 1,000 very, very quickly. But I will double-check on that for you, sir, just to make sure.
Counselor Janet.
Just a comment, they are at the senior center and people have trialed them there.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have, I have heard back from people.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. No further questions on this item? All right. Next item is Town Administrator, update on Town Hall renovations. Take it away.
So, again, I want to thank you for your patience, also the community. I know that every other day, we're doing a different entrance to the Town Hall, and also the staff that works at Town Hall, they are, as you know, amazing people, they have been completely displaced. It started off with just refurbishing or making the front walkway ADA compliant, which is finally done, and it started off as a paint job and replacing the carpeting, and it has become, obviously, something much more than that. I don't know if you've had the opportunities to go into Town Hall, but the clerk's office is completely redesigned. It looks beautiful. Now, and I know, I can say this publicly because it was made part of your backup, about the asbestos. So unfortunately, the tie, the carpeting that was put in the Town Hall, specifically in the council chambers, which is, from what I've learned, the oldest part of the building, there are asbestos tiles underneath the carpet. What should have happened is, what we're doing now is putting plywood on top of those tiles and then attaching the carpet to the plywood. Unfortunately, that was not done in the past. So by removing the existing carpet, we are pulling up the old tiles, breaking them up, and as you know, with asbestos, as long as you don't touch it, it's fine. So with that, we had to have an abatement specialist come in. That is part of your backup. We did do air quality tests, they did verify that those floor tiles are asbestos, need to be removed properly, and there are some ceiling tiles in the building official's office. Other than that, everything that we tested is coming back fine, we also did air quality tests. So the next step for that is to go out to bid, given the information that was given to us about removal of those tiles, and those tiles are specific to the town clerk's office, the current planning office, and the town council chambers. Everywhere else, we're actually moving forward with installing the carpeting. As far as the timeline, I just got this information last week, as you know, when I shared it with you, so I plan on working with the clerk's office to put out a bid. From what I've been told by the specialist who comes in, it's a fairly straightforward job. The issue's going to be what recommendations they make to us about displacement of employees or whether we have to shut down for, shut down Town Hall for a period of time. So as far as everything else, that is kind of the unfortunate issue that has come up that has kind of slowed us down, but I plan on putting out the bid, and once we get the bids, we can have an idea, and we're going to try and make this as least disruptive as possible, because obviously, we want to get you folks back to normal in Town Hall. But also, and I will say, the, it's coming along beautifully. I think it'll be a Town Hall that we can all be proud of. There are a lot of things, it's an old building, and there are a lot of issues that hadn't been taken care of in the past, but now, as, like you do with any home renovations or any renovations, we, we were looking forward to just power washing the front of the building, we hit it with the power washer and all the shingles blew off. So, again, just moving forward, I am, I'm confident that we're going to get, we're going to make it a Town Hall that everyone, the community, that we can all be proud of, but obviously, the asbestos issue is something that came up, and we want to make sure it's addressed properly, so our Town Hall is safe, it's clean, and it's professional.
Questions from the council or comments? Counselor Cometto.
So, I was in the Town Hall today, getting my paperwork, and the clerk's office, everything's looking good, but I do have some concerns on spending, and I don't want to say overspending, but I understand projects are going into more money more. So, just today, being in the building official's office, I got a little confused because they said they were gonna redo their whole office, move it, put doors in, windows, and I, I just don't know where, like, that got approved or where the money is coming from to do all that work. Like, the shingles on the outside of the building, like, that, that was an extra cost. I'm not, I'm not saying it doesn't need it, but, like, tracking the funds, like, where are these funds coming from and are we overspending?
So all of that was approved probably two meetings ago, and that included the exterior of the building with the shingles, also the renovations in the building official's office, also the conference and moving the planning office. I believe it wa, well, I know it was. The original plan, right, the original plan was to move the planner into building, so that everyone was together and turn the current planning office into a conference room, which is what it was years and years ago. So, and I understand your concerns, Counselor.
Maybe, maybe it was a meeting. I mean, I'll have to go back and look, maybe it was a meeting I was away, because I don't remember the, I don't remember the discussion.
And it, it could have been.
My apologies if it was a discussion.
It was following a contentious public hearing, I can tell you that.
Yes, I think he wasn't.
It might have been the one that you missed, the first scene.
So, obviously, the new expense that's going to have to come before you, but I don't have an idea of what that's going to cost, is the abatement of the asbestos.
The 950 was just for the test.
Correct. That's correct.
Counselor DeMire.
So the planning office and the building inspector's going to become one office?
That is correct.
So we have to put window, we, we have to knock down a wall? No.
It's going to be redesigned, so when you walk into the building office, instead of walking into the building office, similar to what we did with the clerks-
All right.
You're going to face the clerk.
There'll be a desk right there.
Correct. Because obviously, there's space issues in Town Hall.
Okay.
So-
I get it.
And I know the original plan, which was talked about years ago, was to have the planner with the assistant and have them all in one specific area.
Who was going to put that in the tax assessor's office? Because that's a huge office.
Correct.
And the tax assessor was going to go in your office-
Correct.
And you were going to go in the building inspector's office-
Correct.
With that as a conference room.
Correct.
Yeah. That was a while ago.
But, and, and also, a lot more costs involved with that.
Yes, right, right.
By just moving the-
But there, but there was a plan to put them together.
The land use clerk into the building office, we're using the existing offices.
Yeah. Oh, I get it.
So, and even with my office, you want to keep your tax collector and your tax assessor together, which is how they kind of are now.
Yeah.
By moving Mr. Robert into my office, we'd have to connect all the offices and now cost spirals out of control.
That's what the plan was.
And given that it's an old building, I mean-
We'll probably find some other problem.
Right. I mean, I want to be able to finish what we've already moved forward with, get back to some semblance of normalcy in Town Hall. The only other thing that's, that's probably exist, that is an issue that we're going to have to face is the wiring, because by, we approved doing the upgraded internet connections, we also have wiring issues and audio issues in the Town Hall council chambers, but the wiring there is antiquated.
For the audio.
And, yeah, for the audio, not so much with the electrical, but definitely for the internet. And right now, and I know, you know, we've talked about this before, we have multiple servers, you know, the clerk has one, there are servers everywhere, and I know with the windows that were getting replaced, that was because the server, which I believe it was a state server, was underneath one of the windows that leaked, and Joan had to put a trash bag on top of it. So again, I know I'm coming in with a lot of expense, a lot of projects that have not been done, and unfortunately, I wish I, and going forward, and I know this is going to be part of the discussion, and I know Counselor Burke has these discussions as well, when we come in front of you and we talk about gaming revenue and we talk about expenses, there's a lot of issues and wants and needs, but we need to better prioritize these things. So this way, we know that there's only so much money to spend, but we definitely have to have a plan, so going forward, that if we're going to replace the windows in Town Hall, we don't have to do them all at the same time. Or we're not going to do half the building and wait five years until the other half, which is exactly what happened in the past. And by waiting, the windows are literally falling out. The ADA with the front walkway, that was a, and as we all know, that was one person's trip and fall away from us getting ordered to do it. So, and I appreciate your concerns, and I can assure you, Counselor, and all council members, do I want it done right? I absolutely do, because I think we have an obligation to do it right and do it once. It's definitely a sarcophagus, I'm probably, it's going to be like a pyramid, I'm just going to die, and then it's going to be done. But going forward, we're going, my plan is to have a Town Hall that we can get all these projects done and then move on to other issues that we have and needs in the town.
Counselor Burke.
Brief comment, I want to thank you. I know there's the money issues, and I appreciate that, and I agree, but I think it's important for us to have that professional face to our residents, to the public, to new people who want to come to town and maybe move here or start a business here. When you have a professional face like that, it just helps with all that. So, thank you, and also, you know, I know it's been a challenge to find meeting space and the like, not just for us, but for every other meeting in town, but it's worth, it's worth it, and I'm also looking forward to a new council chamber that the president can see everybody.
We will get a key to the front door.
We got keys.
Yeah, you have them, right?
Yes. The front door is, is, is working.
Nobody knew where to go.
Yeah, the front door is working now, and it is ADA accessible, it has all the plungers.
It's nice.
It's, it's what, it's what it should be.
Counselor Perry.
Yes, and Mr. Administrator, I don't want to give you more work, but maybe to satisfy this council, we could put a sheet together with how much was appropriated, how much was spent already, and what we got left.
Yeah, that's easy. I can do that for you, sir.
And I think that would satisfy a lot of our questions. Right, so, so, Mr. Burke kind of made a comment of maybe being, the president being able to see it, is there plans on taking the poles down?
Yes. On taking, I'm sorry, repeat that?
The poles.
The poles, yes, sir.
There's plans or, I was going to say that, I mean, I mean, I'm definitely concerned about the money, and I'm sure that's a pretty big project, but if we're going to tear apart, the rug is in the floors right now, I mean, that's the time to do it, and the ceiling's going to come down, so.
This is, put it this, we're going to do this once.
And, and I was also in the building official's office today, and it was pretty bad that there was literally cork holding the window in.
Yes, sir.
At least almost three-quarters of an inch of cork keeping the window shut.
I mean, sir, when we started this conversation, if you recall, the floor in the clerk's office was being held up with floor jacks on top of water pipes and other, and electrical conduit. And I mean, that's kind of what we're dealing with. And I know from a cost perspective, I agree with you 100%, sir, but, and I agree with all of you, but we have an obligation that I believe our citizens want to have, it doesn't need to be a Taj Mahal, but it needs to be a town hall. Something that is reflective of what the people's business and people can come in in a professional working environment for our employees, so when they come in, it's something that they can be proud of.
Any other questions? If not, we can move on. Okay, next item on the agenda is Counsel President Edwards, discussion related to Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, Section 66-102, related to the recycling committee. I wanted to put this in front of the council because I spent some time with the clerks. We were actually unable to find what created the landfill and recycling committee, how that has worked. I think we all are in agreement that this is ostensibly defunct at this point. There is a single member on that committee. And so, yeah, so this is the one item we were able to find. As the administrator had just mentioned, the town hall has basically been torn apart. So whatever created the recycling committee is in a box somewhere that they need to locate. But I'm looking to just gauge the council's willingness to look at essentially removing or eliminating this committee because it hasn't had members in the better part of, what, five, six, 10 years? It's been a long time. I think the last time it was active was my first term on the council. So...
Yes.
Counselor Paul.
So this one is also not in the charter, correct?
Correct.
And this is also something that we talked about potentially discussing with the litter committee?
Yes, so it's, and it's worded, it's worded kind of weird. At some point before 2000, was it 2006, I think it's far back we were able to go, that was the first mention in some council meeting minutes. Not really sure how it's structured, but we can send the solicitor to go figure that out for us so that we can then rescind or eliminate said committee and at least streamline it.
It may have come into play with the either no bin, no barrel, or the page.
It had to do with page.
And it was an offshoot of the, it was an offshoot of the, yeah, of the landfill.
Yeah, it had to do with all of that.
The ordinance is February 27, 2006.
Yeah.
If the council want, I mean, I think the goal based on this discussion, we'll just probably strike that committee from the ordinance. That's it.
Okay, and then we can do that via a vote at the next meeting?
After advertisement.
After advertisement.
Because it's an ordinance, yeah.
Okay. Lose that and I think... Next meeting we have to vote to advertise to strike language. And then along those lines as well, I'd obviously like to get sentiment from the council and looking at the way some of the other boards and commissions potentially might be structured and if there's ways to streamline and increase efficiencies. Because I, as long as I've been on the council and probably as long as Counselor DeMeaders has been on the council, which is much longer than me, we have a significant problem getting volunteers to come forward. So there may be opportunities for us to collapse non, you know, non-charter sanctioned committees into, say, one or maybe, you know, one and a subcommittee on another one. So the council's open to it, we can take a deep dive. All right, now, before we go to executive session, I'd like to add for discussion only under Rhode Island General Law 42466B. Great handwriting there, Mr. Solicitor. Add to the agenda, the memo which we all received from Director Silva, Sylvia, my apologies, related to the current state of the DPW fleet.
One second.
All right, most of you in a second and any further discussion? Discussion only, no votes. All those in favor? None opposed. Director.
I was wondering if you guys are all going to get it, I didn't even get a chance to sign it, if you want a signed version.
No, so we can, any action will happen at a future meeting, but this is...
Yeah, I didn't get any action, but I did put my name on it for signature and didn't get to get that out to you.
That's fine.
Okay, so unfortunately, since the last time I was here, we've had multiple trucks go down and a tractor. So as of right now, we're not mowing anything. So be that as it may, the most important thing to me as we approach winter is the assessment of our plow trucks. And as you can see, this memo is meant to state facts about the current state of our plow trucks. Tiverton DPW has 11 trucks on site that are meant for winter maintenance. If it were to snow tomorrow, we have two trucks that we know are capable of making it on the road. The DPW without working on trucks for winter maintenance as of yet, there's other vehicles that we work on to get them prepared. Believe we have two more trucks capable of being put on the road, making a total of four workable trucks today, maybe six in the future. DPW has nine plow routes. Each route requires one truck to plow the route. This puts the DPW at a shortfall of winter maintenance equipment by five. The DPW should have at least one, typically two backup trucks in the event a vehicle breaks down and requires maintenance, a driver can continue plowing with a standby truck. This makes the DPW shortfall of trucks seven. Just a breakdown I put together with our mechanic. Truck one is a Dodge Ram 5500, it runs. Truck 13 is currently just the backup truck to number one. Truck seven is a Ford F-750, it runs. Truck eight, International 7400 dump body, the piston needs to be replaced so the dump body does not go up and down. We're going to try to fix it. Truck 11 is a, the Mack has a hydraulic system, is rusted. We will be trying to fix that. Truck 12 is a Mack, it's at a dealership in Johnson for inspection and repairs of coolant lines and a recall. So in intent, it's being fixed. They're also going to let us know what other issues may arise on that truck for us to then work on back at DPW. Number 24 is a Freightliner, these are one of the trucks that we're talking about in terms of working on them before snow. It has not been inspected for winter maintenance, but we expect it to run. Truck 25 is another Freightliner, it's not been inspected as of yet, but we expect it to run. Truck number 17 is a Ford 8000 in disrepair, will not be fixed, it is out of service. Truck number 32, Freightliner's not running, emissions and electrical issues, it's out of service. Truck number 34 is a Freightliner, was rebuilt last year, died in the first storm, it is out of service. It is my understanding the DPWs have a list of required vehicles, the town administrator by 7/9 for capital fund meetings on the 29th. It is my opinion waiting for this meeting will have a negative impact on winter maintenance. The lead time is typically 12 weeks or more to order trucks, then to have them upgraded with plows, dump body, and sander. We would not have a new truck here until the middle of January at the earliest. DPW would like the council to consider allowing the DPW to order three more trucks now. Obviously, you can't vote on that, but that is the condition of our vehicles and I will tell you, none of them for plowing or new, so that once we put them on the road to plow, I can guarantee you they will fix within the first or second storm.
What would be the estimated cost of each truck?
The ones that we are in line to possibly get if approved are about $111,000 with the uplifted equipment for plow, sanders, and that type of, the dump body.
And that's multi-use truck?
Correct. Everything I intend for the DPW to purchase will not just be for one season.
So I just got a question about these Freightliners. These, and I understand that you know, maybe you've got some history on them. These Freightliners weren't purchased not too long ago, I don't think.
Nothing that has been purchased has been new.
I'm not saying new, but these Freightliners are not that old. They're all the white ones.
Yeah, it was wild.
I believe. No, they weren't more new, but...
No, Rick never bought anything new.
No, I...
I was hoping Chris would be here. I didn't put the year down on him, but I do know that not a single piece of equipment, except for the truck I am driving, which drives me bananas, is brand new.
I'm trying to get this thing to work again because I had asked for a list and this council got one last December.
Yeah.
This council got one?
Yeah.
The state of the trucks back then...
Do you recall who sent it to you?
The point being, the state of the vehicles back then was ridiculous.
Yeah, these, I think you write around 2018.
I know the F-550 was the last truck that we, I remember purchasing because I was on the council.
The Ford.
The Ford, yeah.
Right, there were some used ones purchased.
Yeah, okay, so you want three?
You said it was December last year.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Administrator.
Just for the council's clarification, you know, obviously, our DPW director is newer, so I have been working, obviously, as I do daily with the DPW director to do like I do with all the department heads, give me an assessment of your equipment. We met on Friday, he is working with his mechanic, he is now pulling in anticipation of, unfortunately, as much as we hate to say it, summer is over, so he is pulling out a lot of his trucks to be ready for the season. And I'm sure the director can clarify me, as you know, several of his trucks are only used for plowing. So that means they get stored away 10 months out of the year. So when we pull those things out, like any car, if you don't use it for the better part of a year, you just hope it's going to start. And on top of that, these things store salt, so they're rotting away inside the garage. And I know the director has a plan moving forward to make the multi-use and the multipurpose vehicles, so there is always vehicles that they can take a sand body and a plow and just attach it to what would be a lift gate or a multipurpose truck. This information and going, also going forward with all the department heads, we definitely have to get back to formulating a five-year plan, a three-year plan for replacement of vehicles.
Mr. Administrator, no disrespect on the five-year plan, but I've been here a long time, just like you, and unless somebody enforces it or sticks through council after council, that plan, people work on those plans so hard, right? And then all we do is we throw it in the trash.
Well, I think there's two, there's two factors, sir. Well, there's two, yes, ma'am, but there's two factors. Councils change every 24 months and you haven't had a town administrator for more than five years.
Right.
And that's your problem, too. Not to mention department heads. I'm your senior department head as the police chief. In my tenure, how many DPW directors, fire chiefs, other than the police chiefs, have you been through? So I definitely think whether we call it a five-year plan, how about we just call it a plan? And we put something together that we can all work with.
Well, also, Patrick, because we have...
I'd like to take it a step further about a plan and make it some type of...
So we just got to, not to cut you off, but the solicitor just said we got to refocus back to the memo.
So you're going to put this on the next agenda?
We will, yes.
I just wanted to add to that, though, one, I know it's discussion only, we're discussing vehicles.
Somebody here?
Those, the Freightliners are 99, 99, 99, a 2010 Freightliner and 2013 Freightliner. The newest trucks on that road, on that fleet, newest one is a, well, the 17 Dodge Ram 3500, and that's it, other than what you have now. There were 2017 Dodge Ram 3500 with 112,000 miles at the time and in good condition. I've been warning about this for a long time. And this email was 10/11/24.
Any further questions?
I would just ask, and I understand we're bringing it back, but I still want to see a plan and how this fits into a bigger plan. Because if we give this by these, somebody else has a priority in one of the other departments, that's going to not be funded, potentially.
I agree with you, sir, and I think the challenge with these type of vehicles, like we experience, I would get myself in trouble as your police chief because there's only so many police cars. And if you're not there to say, we want these police cars, I have to go through a process to get funding, can you just do me a favor and put them in the back lot and put a sign on them that says Tiverton till I can get them? Because if you wait a day, they're gone. Look what's going on with your fire department. We buy a rescue today, we're not getting it for three years. So I agree with you, sir, we definitely have to come up with a plan, but I think it's going to be definitely unique when it comes to these type of purchases because there, other than police cars, police cars, obviously, they're Ford Explorers that we outfit into police cars. Snow plows, dump trucks, rescues, and fire engines, that's a totally different animal. But I agree with you, we definitely have to have a capital improvement plan and how we're going to replace our vehicles on a routine basis.
Well, it's not just vehicles.
Vehicles and other, and other capital equipment and capital needs.
Like Scott Air Packs. Sorry, I don't mean to go off the rails. All right.
I just have one question.
Counsel Perry.
Are we fully staffed yet or are we still looking for two people?
We're still looking for two people.
We're still looking for two.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to, I know we're working on it and trying to get them, but I brought this to the town administrator's attention about two weeks ago. The schools are in violation about charter.
So we can absolutely put this on the next agenda?
Can you?
Yes, but I know the solicitor's going to chop my head off if we go any further afar.
Well, it has to do with people.
It has to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
It will be.
Remind me, Counselor Perry, we will have this on the agenda.
So, John, I mean, just for the record, I'm in support of getting some new equipment, but we just have to do it. There are other capital needs.
Correct.
Right, so I mean, and winter months are pretty important, so we just have to have a plan, faster than later.
Ultimately, I think, and I think what Counselor Burke was alluding to, is whatever the plan is, that's a policy decision that this body has to make. So I think we need to understand what the full, what the full list of needs are and